Six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you'd please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we call the roll, please?
Certainly. Schmuckel?
Here.
Dool.
Here.
Augustinelli?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
Barshaf?
Here.
Corn?
Here.
First item on our agenda today is public comment. If any member of the public would care to address the board, please come to the podium and be so kind to give us your name and address.
Hello, my name is Dustine Murphy. I live at 1546 Green Oaks Drive, Interlock in Michigan. My husband and I are the directors of the junior program at the Traverse City Curling Club. The opening of the Traverse City Curling Center at the Cherryland Mall has enabled the development of the Traverse City Curling Club's junior program. In six months, we have introduced the sport of curling to over 300 children. Curling is able to reach children that don't fit with the traditional sports or don't have a social group and just are at home playing video games. We have seen firsthand how curling at the Traverse City Curling Club has given them a new interest that is fun, gives them gratification as they see their progress, and surrounds them with people that are supportive and want to enjoy each other. Curling is not just competitive, it is social. While the junior curlers are not allowed to have pop from the vending machine, we do give them hot chocolate afterwards. The Traverse City Curling Club junior program strives for an instructor-to-junior curler-participant ratio of one to four. We have one to three coaches on the ice for every eight junior curlers and one to two adults that work the warm room to supervise it and make sure everyone is safe. All of our instructors are Safe Sports certified and have completed background checks. The safety of our junior curlers is our top priority. I am here to ask for your support of the Traverse City Curling Club's liquor license. The club has recognized the importance of junior curling and offers junior curling to area children at a reduced rate. The revenue from liquor sales will allow the curling club to continue to offer more programming for our children and support them both physically and mentally. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Don Pichet, 3916 North Spider Lake Road in Traverse City. And I'm a founder of the Traverse City Curling Club, and I want to thank you for your consideration for our request of the Class C license. When we started this club nine years ago, we had no idea this many people would be enjoying this game. And as a result of our growth, Traverse City has become a shining star, not just in the United States, but worldwide. I had a conversation just recently with Bo Welling, who is the president of the World Curling Federation, and he's not just interested in what's happening in Traverse City as far as curling goes, he wants to host national, international events here in Traverse City. And as you know, I assume you know that Traverse City's been selected as a host for a national championship in February 2024, we're going to be hosting one of the US national events. So this train and all the people in it are coming to Traverse City. Hospitality is key to hosting these events and to keep people coming back. The ability for us to serve during these events, some of these last seven to 10 days, is critical. With our current members license, we can only get 12 days annually. We want to bring the world's best to Traverse City. We want to inspire our youth to dream big and to rub elbows with the best and to make Traverse City the epicenter of the curling world. Procuring this Class C license would keep us moving in that direction. I appreciate your consideration.
Good evening, my name's Lowell Grumman. I live at 318 Wadsworth Street in Traverse City, and I'm the treasurer of the Traverse City Curling Club. And I'm here to ask that you consider approving the club for a Class C liquor license. As part of breathing life into the old Kmart property and building the curling center, which is open for everyone, the club made a commitment to our community to extend our sport to young people and in particular, our high school kids. This is a major financial undertaking for the club above and beyond normal club activities and involves thousands of volunteer hours and time over the course of the year. Our current club license allows for only 12 events per year at which we can sell alcohol to non-members, which is a major financial constraint for us as a club and for me who looks after the budget. It's a constraint on our ability to generate revenue to support these programs. Hosting events at the curling center allows us to earn revenue that pays for these programs that otherwise would not exist. Corporate outings, family reunion outings, tourist outings are all a part of our budget. And we can easily book four events per month, which is four times what our current license allows us. But not being able to sell alcohol at these events inhibits folks who want to book events with us. You have an important opportunity to make an investment in Garfield Township's future, revitalizing the highly trafficked intersection at South Airport and South Garfield. Please support us as we work to revive this critical location in our town and support our outreach efforts by approving the Class C liquor license for the club. Thank you and thank you for your service to the township. Thanks.
Is there anyone else for public comment? All right, we will bring it back to the board for approval of the agenda, the amended agenda, and statements of conflicts of interest. Do we have any conflicts today?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amended agenda.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the amended agenda as presented. Is there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therfrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. Minutes, August 22nd, 2023, regular meeting and August 29th, 2023, study session, recommend approval. Bills, general fund, $429,056.43. Gordy Frazier, Developers escrow fund, utility plan review, oversight and closeout, $38,914. General utilities, $45,127.20. Park funds, DNR trust fund, $3,920 for a total of $87,961.20, recommend approval. Consideration, Resolution 2023-25T to establish an intermunicipality committee for transportation planning in the Traverse study area. It is a new form required by MDOT, recommend approval. An introduction of amendment to Grand Traverse Commons Development Regulations and schedule public hearing for October 10th, 2023, recommend approval.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar for discussion? Is there any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Or staff? And I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent calendar as listed.
Support.
Motion and support from Dool and Barshaf. Are there any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Dool?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Augustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is items removed from the consent calendar, and there are none, which brings us to correspondence. So I received this letter yesterday, and I wanted to make sure that each of you got it. Yeah, we've had some discussions with a few people already, but there'll be more.
No there?
Yeah. It sounds like it was pretty much everybody who touched this case somehow botched it, but, you know.
Well, I personally know these people. And I personally know that Metro was the one that helped the most. And unfortunately, MMR did nothing. And for a gentleman to have fallen down the steps and got a C5 fracture and they didn't put a collar on him concerns me. It concerns me a lot.
All right, any other discussion regarding the correspondence?
Can you, if there's any major updates on this, can you let us know? I'm sure there will be people investigating the call and 911 and everything to find out how this all kind of fell apart.
So you're going to take care of that then, right?
Thank you, Chuck.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
We move on to reports. First is the county commissioner's report. We only have one county commissioner tonight.
Uh oh.
Good evening, everyone. Brad Yu at Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, District Four. Commissioner Flynn had other commitments for tonight, so she couldn't make it. Just have a very few things here. Last board meeting there, we did have our auditor present our audit for the last fiscal year, and everything looks really good. There was some discussion about our MERS being just slightly underfunded right now, but we'll get more updates on that. But as finance and administration explained to us and was explained to us when we bonded the pension and everything was, we would probably see a couple dips as we move forward as more people draw and the investments, you know, go up, go down, and stuff like that. So we are keeping a close eye on it, no real red flags right now, but out of $100 million liability, we're still funded in that, depending on how you look at the report, somewhere in that $95 million range. So it's not like the account is empty by any means, but we are keeping a close eye on that. One big thing that's kind of been in the news, you know, big topic lately is the pavilions. As of right now, the county has loaned the pavilions. This fluctuates repay period, so this is just a rough number, but right around that $4 million mark. We did put together a ad hoc that's going to dig in deeper to the pavilions thing and see if we can come up with some kind of solution to help them get back on track and operate in the black and not the red and everything. So as that moves forward, we'll keep you posted and stuff, but right now it's looking like they could run out of deficit through the end of next year. If that's the case, we could be looking at several million dollars more to keep them afloat. So, but as that progresses, I'll keep you guys updated. One of the, I guess another big things in the news is we do have a new sheriff in town. Former undersheriff Shay is the new sheriff as former sheriff Bensley did retire effective September 3rd. So Sheriff Shay has not picked his undersheriff yet, but I'm sure as that process moves forward, we should know something here in the near future. My discussions with Sheriff Shay was he wanted to have somebody in place sooner than later because right now he's filling both roles and everything, and there's an importance to get that position filled, so. That's all I have on reporting for tonight. I am going to go to Blair Township, but does anybody have any questions or comments or anything for me?
You're off the hook.
Well, that's the second time only, so.
[laughter]
Well, like always, if anybody has any questions, comments, or anything, I think mostly I have my contact information, but if not, it is on the county website, feel free to reach out to me. If you call me and get a voicemail, be a little bit patient. Sometimes we're really busy, like today has been all day county and everything, but I will definitely get back with you, so. Thank you, and I'm going to head to Blair, so.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
Next is the construction report.
Good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. In your packet, you should have a report dated the 6th of September. I guess to go through a couple highlights, I know I'm finally gearing up and getting finished the northwest end of the side of town with all the final capital and pruma projects in light of Cedar Run Water Main being installed, there continues to be a lot of interest. So that third phase booster station, five replacement that we've kind of put on the back burner is now back on the forefront. So that's going to be wrapped up to get in for permit, and I want to get that bid out this winter and see how the prices come in. So it's exciting to have that kind of growth and need for infrastructure. Speaking of Cedar Run Water Main, we closed out and the township accepted the installation. I have pulled together the final invoice to submit to Eagle after now you've approved the consent agenda, and I also prepared the county ARPA request application and submitted that to them too. So that project will end up being fully funded through grants, which is very exciting. A couple other things, capital improvement plans, I met with the planning department, were dusting off the 2021 information I had submitted and just looking through utility infrastructure, some trail cost estimates, things like that to present to the board yet this year. River East, that also, that third phase is going to be bid out this month, so we'll get that going, which is very exciting. And then a lot of utility reviews, we're busy right now, I think three full-time inspectors dedicated to Garfield Township with a lot of the developments. Britton's been going ahead, they're almost wrapped up. Burmley Hills condo is under full-time inspection right now with plans for Burmley Meadows, which is adjacent to that, just submitted for Eagle permit, and they want to stay in that same neighborhood, so they'll be still yet going this fall. Beta facility, we are doing a final walkthrough with DPW this week, so that has gone well. And Ridge's 45 is also under construction full-time, and we're providing that inspection. Several stormwater reviews, and we continue to get a lot of mistake requests from DPW and interest from developers. So there's some parcels available. I've met with the planning department and a couple developers just coming in, finding out access to infrastructure and what they can expect, so it's all good stuff. Yes, ma'am?
So prices on things, how are we looking? It's been, is it still straight up or are we?
What I am seeing, the market's still, and we're still seeing that inflation personally, but what I am seeing is with recent projects, I've been giving contractors a large window, like the whole year. You dictate your schedule. I just had a project go up for bid over in Thompsonville, I had seven water main contractors bid on it, but knowing they had a whole year and they could dictate their schedule. Now, of course, they got to come in and they can't leave, but it gives them a lot of flexibility. So I'm finding, you know, it used to be we bid everything out in the winter because they put it on their book of work for spring, while everybody's book of work next spring is full now. So just providing a large construction window has been proving itself to be beneficial to capture more interest, which I hope drives down prices through competition.
A follow-up to that, on the Silver Lake and Zimmerman Road?
Yeah.
Project that's coming up with this new way of bidding and having it extend over a full year, is there a chance we might be able to get some bids on that or?
Yeah, because as you recall, we did put it out for bid because they had a pretty tight window and we wanted it done this year, we got no bidders. So I, yeah, I'm just kind of waiting for, to get through the Labor Day weekend, which we're now through, I'm going to release bids again.
We'll try it.
And try it. And unfortunately, I know they don't like hearing that, being Franciscos, but that's what we're saddled with is that bidding environment. But yes, I'm optimistic, that's, from what I've been told from contractors, we will get bidders at that point.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Next item is the sheriff's report.
Hello, Roy Rask with the Sheriff Department. Probably the biggest news is the lieutenant position here will be filled by Friday of this week, so see how that goes. There's three people competing for that position. It's probably the biggest news. The guys, the CPO's been pretty busy this last month. George Preston and Amanda did a couple community barbecues, one with Brookside Apartments, they had a really good turnout, it was just before school started. George had a good time with the kids and meeting with the parents. And then at Carson Square, George and Amanda again met with the kids and some of the families there and did another barbecue. And Grand Traverse Metro was with them at both places and they had a good time with that. It's a good turnout, it was a good way to end the summer. George is going to be retiring again next month, so we'll be sure George, but he's been great to have back at the Sheriff's Department with it. As far as stats go, as usual, it's really busy and the guys were able to, or ended up writing 115 citations in the last month in Garfield Township. Traffic accidents and injury accidents, they had 87. Just in Garfield Township alone, they had 13 arrests for OWIs and handled 58 other criminal complaints. Mike Mikowski's back in the school now, full-time. Haven't got a lot of feedback from Mike, but it sounds like everything's going well for the most part, and Amanda's probably going to hang up the e-bike in the next two weeks, that'll be it for the bike patrol. That's about it, any questions?
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck, Roy.
Just two more days.
All right, next item is the GT Metro fire report.
Good evening, Garfield Board, Pat Parker, Metro Fire Chief. My statistics go back to the month of August, so all of Metro, we had 590 calls, and of those 590 calls, 387 of them were here in Garfield Township with, again, medical assists leading that at 264. Of those calls, falls, pretty much falls in line, falls lead that with 74, difficulty breathing, general weakness, and medical arm by cardiac calls. Our wheel, we usually put in here, we're showing that Garfield is 66% of our total calls, and above that, you can see that our stations, Station 1, 28% of the calls, Station 8, 15, Station 9, 6, Station 11, 32, and Station 12. 18% with 1% of our calls being out of the area. Just some quick things happening in Metro is we had a very nice 9/11 memorial yesterday, hard to believe, it's 22 years. Thanks Chuck for representing Metro and Garfield Township. I didn't think any of the other board members made it, but appreciate that. It did rain a little bit, but Deacon Yonker said a quick prayer and about two minutes later it quit raining, so we were at that point of do we move inside, do we move out? We've held the public hearings already in Acme in East Bay, and they've passed our budget tonight, hopefully we'll do that here. We had an employee that completed a six-week, 40-hour-a-week probation, and when we moved him to the full-time schedule, he quit and said he had to go back to the UP for Family Matters, so that kind of hurt as we were looking forward to him, but we had another part-timer that we put on, and he's doing very well. This past month, we've been training on heat emergencies, chest pain, SCBA drills, and RIT May Day with the Sheriff's Department, which went over very well. Just some calls of interest, we had a building fire in Peninsula Trail in East Bay, we assisted the city downtown on 7th Street, we had a building fire out on Hartman Road and lost, unfortunately lost an outbuilding out there, and we had another structure fire on Falling Leaf in East Bay Township. Our fire marshal's been busy with plan reviews, and we did 13 brand-new plan reviews last month with 13 annual inspections, 98 re-inspections, and a bunch of special events which are happening in our area all over the place. Jen, our public educator, again, been busy with car seat checks at Station 11 and City Station 2, we did 18 car checks last month. Been busy with AAA, had a community day, and we did truck tours and had over 30 people come in for that. Jen's been busy with fire extinguisher training, and we did seven at the new United We Smile building and 35 from the Great Wolf Lodge, so we're excited about that. So unless you have anything further, this is Metro reporter.
I was traveling yesterday, flying, coming back home, and it was really neat how the airports and the planes when we were on them took a moment of silence at every one of the events from 9/11.
Wow.
The whole airport, when you were on the plane, they did it, it was pretty cool. And then when we checked, when I checked through TSA in the morning, they had a big celebration, not celebration, but a big memorial thing going on at TSA, and it was airport-wide.
Very nice. Yeah, I had people ask me, when are you going to stop doing the memorial? And I tell people, when are we going to stop remembering Pearl Harbor? I mean, so it's one of those things that, you know, we in Police Fire EMS, we made a promise to everyone in New York and Shanksville and Pentagon that we would never forget, so that's why we continue it, so. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Next item is the planning department report for September 2023.
Good evening, the report's in the packet, just want to highlight three things. Tomorrow evening, the planning commissioners meeting, they have a couple of public hearings, one for portable storage solutions, which is a special use permit consideration for a shipping container sales and rental operation on Cass Road. Also, a zoning map amendment, public hearing to rezone some property on Hartman west of Cass from rural residential to multifamily residential. The planning commission will also be meeting later this month at their study session. We're now getting into the future land use map as part of the update to the master plan, so there's been discussions on some of the designations and where there may be some changes to the map to allow for future development. And then also, in your agenda tonight, you did schedule the public hearing for October 10th for the joint planning commission, that's for the Development Regulations Amendment, which would allow for the building height to be adjusted related to Building 50 so that they can restore the historic front-center portion of that building. That will allow them to kind of go back to the original form of that building. So those are the highlights I have.
Questions for John? Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Next is the Parks and Rec report, and you have it in writing. Feel free to call or email the Parks guys if you have any questions. Then item G is the clerks' report.
Have someone have the clerks' report in writing? Are there any questions? We did do a training last week with the Bureau of Elections here at Garfield Township. They're still working on our plan, we still don't have the software, the forms, anything to implement, proposal too, but we're working on it, state's working on it. And then the legislators still haven't decided when our presidential primary will be, either February 27th or March 12th, which generally we would be preparing for that already, but if it's February, we don't have the dates yet, so we're in a holding pattern right now on the first. Question for her? So if it's in February, when do you have to have those absentee ballots out? It's 40 days before.
So January.
Before February 27th.
That gives you a lot of time.
Yeah, so we have to get the applications out first, then get the applications back, and then we get the ballots in, we have to get those all out. Yeah, I know, and they don't have the forms yet for us to send the applications, they're working on those, because you could do permanent ballot now, so that's going to be on the form. We're working on it. So when we go to the permanent ballot, you'll just automatically send a ballot? I keep the application that you sign on that. I keep the application that you sign on that permanently. And then the ballot will go to that address and it will follow you if you move. So, yeah?
If there are no glitches.
If there's no glitches, yeah. I know. I'm just following the rules.
Yep. Any other questions for Laney?
Good luck.
Next is Supervisor's Report. Attended the groundbreaking for the Evergreen Development on Gray Road on the Long Lakeside, which will tie into our water supply. And it's, looks to be a pretty interesting development. It's going to be a net-zero energy development. So they'll, they don't burn any fossil fuels. They'll have electricity, but it'll be solar and, and the plan is to market them, the houses, around $330,000. Which is pretty close to normal market rates. It was an exciting project. We'll see how it goes. We went to, and I went to an MTA luncheon and there was a group there who has a Employee Assistance Program that was very interesting. My understanding is it's not very expensive and it gives employees someone to talk to if they have a reason, especially first responders. I think it's very important to. I think our employees are pretty low-stress, but it was an interesting, interesting program. Met with the Building and Personnel Committees and I think we got everything handled and we're moving in the right direction. We'll have some more discussion about the Personnel Committee at our study session, which we'll talk about soon. I spent a lot of time talking to the Liquor Control Commission, looking at the various and sundry special licenses that are available, reading a lot of state statutes, which is always good fun. But I got a headache, but I didn't come up with any great solutions. But I did have the pleasure of going to the inaugural International Fireworks Festival at the Pittsburgh Stadium. And it was incredible. Chloe was there. It was, there was a lot of fireworks. And we pretty much got rained on the whole time by ash.
Wow.
It was worth it, though.
Holes in your clothes didn't matter, right? Air's on fire.
It's all part of the experience.
And the German team won, and they also reported that while they were here, they did some curling. All right, we will move on to, are any questions for the Supervisor? We'll move on to unfinished business versus a public hearing. Consideration of the amount of property tax millage to levy for the 2024 general and fire fund accounts. And we have, we had a discussion in our study session. We're not allowed to vote there, but we felt we had a consensus. So we put the number of lowering the millage from 2 mils to 1.75. Metro has tailored their budget to work with the same amount of millage they used last year, which is 2.75. Someone like to make a motion?
You have a public hearing first.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Then we'll make a motion.
Then we can do a motion.
Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to the tax rate request? Please feel free to come to the podium. Give us your name and address. All right, we will close the public hearing and come back to the board.
I'll make the motion that we approve our township's operating millage at 1.75 and the fire operating millage, would that be correct, at 2.75?
Support. We have a motion and support to approve the tax rate request as presented.
I think one of the things that needs to be brought up, and we brought up in the study session too, is the fact that we are decreasing our rates, but some of the Garfield Township residents won't see the difference because your school taxes might go up or something else might go up. But it was decided upon in our next newsletter to put in there where your taxes go. So everybody's well aware. Like we said, we are decreasing, but other people are increasing. So at least you know that where your taxes are going.
Best we can do.
Yeah, it's the best we can do. We can decrease to help a little bit, but.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, we have a motion and support. Perhaps a roll call vote, please.
Dool?
Yes.
Schmuckle?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
And Cor.
Yes.
Just so you know, Ann, Chris is the one that seconded that.
The next item is consideration of recommending approval for a Class C liquor license for the following applicants. Number one, High Tops Request for Class C License Resolution 2023-18T. And number two, Curling Club Request for Class C License Resolution 2023-23-T. So third meeting in a row, we've discussed this. And the, the dog bar has been unable to get a lease, a location. So we are unable to grant a liquor license to someone who has no address. That's why they're not here tonight. Can anybody have anything they'd like to? Chris?
So just thinking back of what the discussion, what took place a few weeks ago is Denise mentioned how, you know, a license probably should impact the greater group of the community taxpayers rather than being narrowly, you know, affecting people. And, you know, and my opinion was, you know, the least impact on public safety, but I've had some thought and some time to think about it. When you look at the liquor law, a Class C, when you read it, is designed for a bar or a restaurant. That's what it says in all the literature that you read. And I think that the intent is to affect a broad group of people, right? Who want to eat there and who want to drink. When I looked at the, there's a special act license that if you hold an international or national event, that you could qualify for that. But the curling club isn't listed in the law as somebody who would qualify for that, even though you're holding a national event. You have to be like the, you know, PGA, NFL, stuff like that. It's very clear the law says like 10 different organizations. Also redevelopment licenses, the research I did on that, I feel that the mall would qualify, would have to have more opinion on that. And if it's a shopping district, then somebody could qualify for redevelopment license, which would be $20,000. And then sometimes, I think as it was presented, licenses can be whatever the going rate or the demand is. I mean, I've heard over $100,000. So, you know, the mall, could they qualify for redevelopment license? Maybe in that location.
Which mall?
Cherryland Center. But I think, you know, and John had mentioned that we have to pick winners and losers. And I'm, I have no experience to draw from to say who's the winner and who's the loser. In the research that I've done, I really think as a township that's growing, we should have a very clear policy and ordinance that gives us guidance in how we go about picking who the winner is. You know, what is the vision for the township? Should we be taking these quota licenses and putting them into areas? And again, I'm not saying that this is going to happen, but the Olsen's property is looking to develop south of town. Maybe we as a township say that that's where that should go because we really want that to flourish and build up more than it ever has. Or maybe we pick a place over at Hammond and Garfield, you know, as a township board, that that is our priority. And we hold those quota licenses to fulfill what our vision is. And I don't, I don't know, I've never been part of those discussions because I've been on the board for like two years, two years or a little bit longer. But should there be conversation with the Planning Department, with the board, coming up with a policy, coming up with an ordinance, and then following it? And then every time somebody else comes to us and says, I would like one, well, as long as we're being consistent in our decisions, I think that would be the guiding document. So I kind of feel from my seat, I would like the township to look further into what that would look like. You know, what are example ordinances and policies? I don't mean to drag this out, it's just my own opinion, that we do a little research, we put a little effort into this, so that way when we're faced with this decision again, we have some direction that allows for consistency. And, you know, the Class C, like it says, it's a, it's a, it's not a, an ice venue where curling's taken place, it's a bar or restaurant. And, you know, the mall, you know, they all, I think, would qualify for redevelopment. So I know, I just feel like I, from my seat, I would rather have us have a guiding document and some real thought put into this process, rather than just deciding on a whim who wins, who loses.
I agree.
Just my two cents.
Okay.
I agree with Chris. I really think that we need to brainstorm this because he's right, you know? Olsen's property in the future. And we only have one right now, correct?
Roughly the next eight or nine years.
So 150, 1,500 more, greater population gives you one more quota license. So it's eight more years from now.
I think it would be hard to regional it or district it. Because if we did that and then something really cool comes up over here, we're tied by our ordinance. So we'd have to be very careful in how we do that. Both malls need help and any liquor license is going to help them. But I'm along the same thing as you, Chris. I think that Class C is supposed to be out there for the general public's use. Any day they want to go there and eat or drink. And that's, my uncle owned the Carlin Inn and unfortunately he's gone, but I was able to talk to his sons about this a little bit. And that was their opinion too, is that a Class C is an any-day go-to. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, it describes that it has, you know, set hours for the public to visit it, set days. I don't know that the curling club is open 24/7 for people just to walk in. It's usually by event. You know, and you have two locations that need vitalization, right? So who's the one, who gets to win? You know, they talk about quotas should be not for the big corporations, like your Olive Gardens, your Red Lobsters, they should be for the, you know, the small businesses like we have advocated for the, for the mall. But I, you know, I think this is bringing a big decision in front of us that I feel like gives us a time to create a process going forward. And it doesn't mean that any of these businesses, if they were to not have a supporting vote tonight, that in the future, they couldn't be supported by us doing some homework, bringing John into the conversation, bringing Mike Green into the conversation. Also, you know, there's literature out there about holding public hearings, you know, having public input. Do the people around the mall want a 24/7 bar, restaurant back there? You know, because there's a lot of residences to the north. So do those people get a voice that we consider when we're deciding this? So there's a lot that we can do to, you know, help us make this decision and put a process in place for future boards or us in the future when these requests come up. That's what I would like to see.
Chuck, is there any limit on the purchasing of Class Cs for Garfield? I mean, could somebody like in the next two months, all these places purchase eight Class Cs and start restaurants? I mean, is there a limit? Does the state limit that?
The township would have the ability to say no to bringing another license in.
So they have, so if they wanted to purchase a Class C and came to us, we would have to say yes or no for that purchase?
Right.
Okay.
Interestingly, if they, if somebody wants to leave with a license, we have no say in it. So it's only when it comes in.
Okay, so they can dismiss with no permission, but can't, okay. That's similar to the, the microbrews and that, that we've went over and did.
Yeah, microbrews are a whole separate category.
Right, but they still come across our desk.
Yeah, they look for approval. But they, in the past, when a restaurant is closed down with a liquor license and they put it out to auction, it can sell to somebody from out of the county, downstate. We have no, we have no control on where it goes in that situation.
I have talked to a lot of people since our last meeting. And the consensus of the people that I talked to, they would rather have it go to the restaurant because there's a lot of people that I talked to that weren't interested in curling and wouldn't go to curling. And those are the people that I just talked to over the past couple of weeks. I did have one person said that they might go to an international curling event, but most of them said they want to take their kids to a restaurant. And if the adults wanted to have a cocktail, they could have a cocktail. And that's just from, I probably talked about 200, 30 people over the past couple of weeks. See what happens when you're retired, you can go talk to people.
Yeah. The interesting thing is there is a redevelopment, Resort Redevelopment District License, which is, gives you a number of licenses to use for a specific area. With the investment that the curling club has put into the Cherryland Center and with what's coming with the Symphony and this quadplex in front that's going to have another coffee shop oddly enough.
We need that.
And the two other coffee shops.
And we, and we had the rebuild of the Burger King and the addition of the Wendy's. So all of those things are getting close to the dollar amount. It needs to be.
400, was it 400,000?
It needs to be a million dollars per thousand population. So we were in 19.5 in the last census. So when the Cherryland Mall investment reaches 19.5, we would be able to designate that as a redevelopment area that is, it's available and then apply for it. It's what they did in the city and they have a lot of liquor licenses. I would want to do that, but unfortunately, all of those licenses require that you be open to the public. So the, the curling club could generate the ability to do that with their investment and kind of sparking that area's growth. They could not use that license because they're not going to be open to the public for 10 hours a day.
A question about that Resort Redevelopment License. Do we have to limit to just the Cherryland Mall as it currently exists? Or can we extend over to Barlow and pick up Carson Square and that, those new, that new housing complex that's gone in there? I mean, the city is a big unit. So, you know, can we do a square mile?
We can designate the area whatever, however we like.
However we like. So it seems to me that we should be able to find that much in redevelopment between coming down Barlow, Carson Square, those new houses that are going in there, plus what's happening at the mall. If we can do that.
How far back? How, in the monies that are spent in those developments, what's the time span of those, Chuck? Do you know?
Three years.
Three years? It's all going to be done within a three-year time period? Okay.
So right now, the Wendy's was built two and a half years ago, roughly. So if we can get a few more projects in, it looks like they're coming, then we could be in a position to do that. But as I said, that would not help the curling club because all of those licenses require you being open to the public.
But then again, you look at the Liquor Control Site definition, it's, it has to be bar or restaurant.
It doesn't have to be. It just says, you know, it gives you an example of what that license would be for.
Right.
You know, another thing too, towards a policy is, you know, that quota license can be moved in three years. can be moved in three years. So if you have a business that's a new startup that's just trying something, it technically could fail in three years, and the people who have that could move it out of the area. So it's no longer ours to benefit from.
Right.
So, you know, part of a policy you may want to look at and say, as long as they're an established, somebody who's established and run a business like this, that you know that there's going to be longevity, now you're protecting the interest of the taxpayer and the way you approve that. So this is why I bring this up, because I think it's, when you're picking winners and losers, it's kind of a big deal, and I feel like a lot of homework should be put into it.
And again, with the High Tops too, they're going to be putting that money into it. I mean, you know, I know the Curling Club already has, but High Tops is going to be putting that money into it too.
And I was really happy to see kind of a commitment letter from the bank.
Right.
So we know that the money is available. That was a question that I had.
Yep. Chloe?
I like the idea of a process, but so far, we haven't had a process. It's pretty much been, from what I understand, first come, first served when people come to the board. And we haven't scrutinized other businesses like we have in this situation. So I'm thinking maybe a policy in the future for our next round of licenses would be good. But we have a business who wants to operate a restaurant and a bar, which is what a Class C license is intended for. They're coming to us, they're asking for this license. They have $400,000 they're going to be putting into a property that potentially needs it. The whole community can benefit from it. So to me, it's, it's almost like a no-brainer. We should, just based on our precedent that we've set before, by just doing first come, first served, I, I don't know for sure that they would have got it at that meeting, but had the Curling Club not come, would we have just given it to them because it makes sense? So I'm of the opinion that we should, we should give it to High Tops. That's my opinion, just because it makes sense. It serves economically. It's going to create jobs, bring people to the mall. It might not revitalize the mall, but I think putting value into the mall, which is one of our top 10 taxpayers in this region, in our township, I don't think is a bad thing just because we don't want to see the mall fail or be vacant. Not that this is going to, you know, save it or anything, but I think investing into the mall is, there's nothing wrong with that, in my opinion.
I agree. You need a motion? What we want to do, or you tell us?
We can, we can do that. We could ask for comments from the two applicants.
I think, I personally think we've had a lot of comments and from everybody, but I would make a motion that we give the Class C liquor license to High Tops.
Support.
And we have a motion and support. Are there any questions? Or comments?
We've had a lot of discussion on this.
We have. As I said, it's a, I can see pros and cons both ways.
Absolutely.
You know, the mall, 10 years ago was, had a taxable value of $30 million. Currently, its taxable value is down around 11, I think. So it's been moving in that direction.
But by putting a new business in there, it might move in the other direction too. You don't know that.
I don't know it, but I believe it.
You know, the thing is, is any of the restaurants, any of the bars, may have the chance of going and obtaining a Class C.
Right.
This just happens to be a golden egg that Garfield's sitting on, that we can award to somebody that we believe is in the best interest of all the community members. So if, if other people come in, I mean, there's no more to ask for, but other places could start up, like that Dog Park might end up leasing up in the Buffalo Ridge area or the Buffalo, whatever that development is, they'll have to buy one and go shopping. You know, and then that's going to come in front of our board of, do we want to approve them, you know, having that there? But this is a hard one because this is a, by the sounds of it, a golden egg.
So the Dog Park or Dog Bar would have the ability to lease up in the Garfield-Barlow area, where with the right investment, they would be able to get a license.
Redevelopment license if we put them in there? How close are we to that number? Any idea, just roughly?
We don't know what the cost is, final cost is going to be on the quad that's going to the front, but it appears to be in the low to mid-teens right now.
And if we can pick up everything to Barlow and La Frania and pick up the Shell.
Yeah, there's, there are some restrictions. I mean, you can't, you couldn't go out to Hammond Road, but.
Oh, could we go from Garfield Road to La Frania Road?
Yeah, we got to look into that.
Yeah, Garfield to Barlow.
Yep.
A corridor, corridor, did I say that right? Corridor area?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and support to adopt Resolution 2023-18T. High Tops request for a Class C license.
I'm sorry, I didn't put that in there, sir.
That's all right.
Please forgive me.
If there are no other questions or comments, a roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Did McCumber second that?
Yes.
Yes.
Barchef?
With a comment that I understand your point of view, and I would ask that the supervisor start instructing his staff to put together a policy or ordinance or a proposal for us to review for future requests. But considering what you said, yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
And Corn?
No, it's not unanimous, but it is. Mr. Beeler. On that note, we'll move on to new business. Consideration of upgrading the township's elevator controller. Elevator is 19 years old.
It's as old as me.
Its electronic control unit is not, it's in delicate condition. If it fails, we will be unable to fix it until we can get a new one. So it makes more sense to order one now and.
I know that we had talked about this at the building committee, and I think if I'm not mistaken, I look back at the budget, we still have $100,000 in our building. So this is like 1905, 1908, 2000.
It would be our luck, it would fail when it's full of Laney's voting equipment halfway between the floors.
That would suck.
And Metro would have to come and evict the equip, get the equipment out of there. It'd be like opening a can.
We'll call Pat. He'll fix it.
Or they couldn't come up to vote.
That would be awful.
Yeah.
Could I make a motion that we upgrade the township elevator controller at the cost of $19,800 to Otis?
Support.
Yep, there you go.
We have a motion and support to accept the proposal for Otis. Questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Nellie?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Barchef?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Brings us back to public comment. If anyone would like to make any public comment for the close of the meeting?
Good evening. My name's Kevin Byrne, 4421 West Timberwood Drive, Traverse City, Michigan. First of all, congratulations to the people from High Tops. Wish you the best of luck in the future. I would like to have had the comment, the opportunity to address the board before the vote was taken because there are a couple of points I want to share with you. Number one is, yes, the law does say bar tavern restaurant, but the appeal of the Class C license is the flexibility of use. It is not limited to those establishments. It is not widely known Traverse City Golf and Country Club has a Class C license. That's not open to the public. Center Ice has a Class C license. That's not open to the public. Crystal Downs, one of the most exclusive golf courses in the entire world, has a Class C license, and it's not open to the public. We are far more open than most of those other organizations are to the public. As for the concept that the licenses should be reserved exclusively for bars, taverns, and restaurants, I respect that position, but it also be taken into context that when you do your research for your policy, which I urge you to do, there should be a checklist, a scorecard, and so on, where these are not, they're not this difficult, you either score or you don't, decision. You will no doubt find that Garfield Township has the highest percentage of liquor licenses to population in the state of Michigan, the United States, and the world. It's not like having a license for the Curling Club is going to dilute that. Those are public record numbers. I've run them a couple of times, and that's something to think about. Thank you for your consideration and enjoy the rest of your night.
Anyone else for public comment? Is there any other business to come before the board today?
Are we going to have another budget meeting?
I was thinking we could have a budget study session next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, the 19th.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I am.
They're thinking like four?
3:30 again?
Left to Chris that's working and Steve that's working.
I can get away whenever. I own the business, so I can leave whenever I want.
Got a good boss. It's a nice bird. What time is good for you, Chris?
Considering most of the people work till 6:00, could we do it at 4:00 and have a couple hours?
Sure.
Yep.
Is that all right?
Yep.
So that would be the 19th, Chuck?
Yes.
Got it.
Tuesday, the 19th, 4:00 PM.
Why do I have, wait a minute.
So the last big rainfall we had, I was going to the joint rec authority meeting, and I thought, I have a little time, so I'm going to drive down Cass. Our new culverts are working really wonderful.
Yep.
Amazing how that water flows and not, I did, did you get any reports on flooded businesses? I mean, that was a lot of rain.
None. But on the other hand, the Medali Park was as wet as I've ever seen it. It was.
Up over the road?
It was way up.
Yeah, the river. Yeah.
So it's, it was a, it was wet and it got wetter and it just, everything worked fine.
And I was glad the Cass businesses didn't suffer from the deluge. And I know other places did. There was roads covered in water. There was, you know, drainages not draining fast enough.
I love when I get a flood warning and my place will.
Yeah, up high.
On top of the hill.
If you get, yeah, if you get flooded, we are in big trouble.
What's interesting is that, basically, that entire problem was caused by MDOT's failure to maintain their culverts.
Do they maintain the one under the railroad too, or is that railroad?
I'm sorry, MDOT Rail.
Oh, MDOT Rail, okay.
MDOT Rail, that was the big problem. That was where the, where the determination was made where the water would back up. I remember Pat out there with, he had an old pumper out there.
We had the pump vehicle. I remember going to the east side of that railroad grade. It was county, county administra, what's his name, former sheriff, deputy, undersheriff? Nate Alders. We walked to the other side, and it was, it was leaching through the soil, and I'm like, oh, this thing could implode.
It's going to go.
We're like, Pat, hurry up with the pump.
Didn't somebody get a shower there?
Yeah, Pat and I did when somebody turned it on and we couldn't get the valve shut off or something, but.
Can we make a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn if there are no objections.
I thought you were retired. Don't be rushing.